Good evening, everybody. My name is Eleanor Larson. I am 17 years old. I'm a senior at Brighton High School and I'm the chair of the Brighton Youth Commission. The first time that I attended a candidate forum around four years ago, I knew that one day I wanted to be the one moderating. I'm so honored to be here today and I really appreciate the opportunity to be involved in local government. The Brighton Youth Commission is a city board composed of young people and adult commissioners. Our role is to serve as a voice and representative for youth in our city. We work closely with city council and some of us even sit on city boards as youth liaisons. The BYC gives us many great opportunities such as networking, professional development, and introducing us to other programs geared towards young people. They also focus heavily on youth civic engagement. Personally, Brighton Youth Commission has impacted me by increasing my confidence, teaching me about local government, and I've also created friendships with my fellow commissioners. I would like to thank the youth service team, Rachel, Abby, and Tanya, or RAT as we affectionately call them. These three women have known me since I was in 4th grade. They have helped me and countless others become who we are today. As I'm sure many of you know, the candidate forum is a very important event. It is a great opportunity to get to know the candidates and to be an informed voter. I would like to thank everyone who's here tonight. You are keeping our democracy alive. Next, I would like to thank everyone who has played a role in planning and execution of this year's candidate forum. And a special thank you to the Brighton Economic Development Corporation for providing drinks and the team at Sioux Corbett Active Adult Center for hosting us. Finally, I would like to thank the candidates for not only attending tonight but also having the courage to run for office. Being a public servant is no easy feat and I applaud you for taking a leadership role in our community. I'm now going to go over the rules for tonight's forum. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks and one minute for closing remarks. For each question, candidates will have one minute to respond. Time limits will be strictly enforced to ensure fairness. A timekeeper will provide visible cues when candidates are halfway through the time, yellow, and when time is up, red. When the time is up, I will stop you. This is a forum, not a debate. Candidates should be addressing the audience, not each other. All remarks and responses should be directed towards the moderator or audience rather than other candidates. Speaking order will be rotated so no candidate always goes first or last. After three questions, there will be time for audience questions. And audience questions must be relevant to city issues and addressed to all candidates equally. Personal attacks or questions targeting a single candidate will not be allowed. Candidates must remain respectful and professional. Personal attacks, interruptions, or offensive language will not be permitted. Applause will be allowed only at the beginning and end of the program to maximize time for discussion. Also with that, please silence your phones if you have one. Also, outbursts, jeering, or cheering will, or any disruptions will not be permitted. Audience members must remain respectful and refrain from interrupting candidates or moderators. The moderator has the authority to enforce rules, manage time, and maintain decorum. And finally, by participating, candidates agree to abide by these rules and ensure a fair, informative forum for the community. Next, we're going to let the candidates do opening statements. Opening statements are limited to two minutes and then we'll move on to questions followed by questions from the public. We are going to start in Board One at the end of the table and move towards me.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jessie Williams and I am running for City Council Board One. I am a wife, a mother, and a Colorado native. I am an operations manager for the Mortgage Warehouse Living Division for one of the top five banks in the United States. I am the treasurer of our local HLA board, an ELKS member, which is a charity organization, and I hold a business management degree. For the last three and a half years, I have spent my time attending every, almost every, single city council meeting and study session, along with attending the Lockbury Sewer Board meetings. And I've actually also toured their wastewater and water treatment facilities, along with visiting our Brighton treatment facilities as well. I have completed the civics academy and from there, I've also stood with our local community regarding public safety issues regarding the rezoning for the battery factory. I have stopped gravel trucks from going through our school zones. I have stood with our local farming community while they fight for their right for their land and way of life. And I continue to help out the community with anything that they need. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brianna Collins. I am also running for City Council Board One. My husband and I have been in Brighton for just over 16 years. He currently coaches at Brighton High School. He coaches varsity football. I have two boys who also graduated from Brighton High School. I have a daughter who is nine years old. She's at Pennock in the 4th grade. I have been sitting on the Brighton Legacy Foundation for just over eight years. I'm currently co-chairing that committee. For those of you that aren't familiar with what the Legacy Foundation does, we work to support our local nonprofits through grant funding every year. I'm also sitting on the Mill Levy Oversight Committee, which I'm sure most of you know that we finally got a Mill Levy override to pass a couple of years ago. Part of the verbiage on that ballot was that there had to be a committee created of community members that would oversee how those tax dollars are spent. So that is what we're doing on that committee. And I've been doing that for about two and a half years now. I feel like the time that I've spent on these committees and my professional leadership experience has given me the skills needed to sit on City Council Board One. I just want to give a quick thank you to Brighton Youth Commission and the EDC for putting this all together tonight and getting us all in the same room. I'm excited to be here and thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Anne Stao. I moved to Brighton in 1999. Been a licensed real estate broker and own my own business since 1994. Moved to Brighton, like I said, in 99. I finished raising my kids here. They graduated from Brighton High School. I love this city. And a few years ago, I've been sitting on city councils, did I already say that? Since 2020. Started paying attention to what was going on in my city and sucked in and wanted to serve my community in a different way. And so I decided to run for city council. And it's been very fulfilling. And I'm running for another term. So hopefully I'll be able to, the residents, for another four years.
Well, good evening. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Mayor Rick Mills. I've been mayor here for the past nearly six years and he's served on council nearly eight years. First of all, I'd like to thank Brighton Youth Commission for putting this on. They do the incredible job every two years doing a candidate forum, helping you as a residents understand who is running and who, you know, what kind of choices you have on your ballot coming up this November, or really this month, because you'll get your ballot like in the mail really soon. Also, I'd like to thank the RAT. I just learned that acronym. Thank you. For supporting and also the Brighton EDC. I've lived in Brighton for the past 14 years. My wife and I, we have a, well, we started out living in Board Two and most recently moved into Board Four, but we've been in Brighton for a while now. Been married in my life for about 25 years. We have three boys together. All three of my boys have attended schools in 27J. And two of my boys have special needs and I decided to run another term. Thank you.
Excellent. My name's Kevin Forsyth. I'm running for Board Three. And I am a husband, father, grandfather. We have a blended family of 10 kids. And 10 kids are awesome. The youngest is up and out and doing cool adult things. And they're just, they're all making their lives. And luckily, our oldest four are all married and they're all producing grandchildren. So we have eight grandchildren and another ninth on the way. I'm here because a good friend of mine came to me early September and asked me to run. And I said, I can do it. And he said, well, I think you'd be great and I think you can win. So that's why I'm here tonight. It works out perfectly because with the youngest moving out of the house, I have a little bit more time and I can now take my service that I'm used to doing up another level. And I want to serve, I want to serve with the city council in Brighton. I have no aspirations of going any higher than that. This is not political for me. This is a good position that I think I could fill and do a great job. So just to share a couple of my hobbies so you get to know me a little bit is I love golf. I like to scuba dive sometimes with sharks. And I also play softball. And those are pretty much the top three right now for me at this age. But I did plan on having kids younger just so that as I become a grandpa, I can be active and spend a lot of good time with them.
Kingdom. There we go. So my name is Melinda Carvahal. Thank you for having us this evening at the Adult Center. And thank you guys for hosting us this evening. I am a mother of five. I am a mother of five. Sorry, it's very spooky up there. I am a mother of five children that all attend 27J schools. I have a high school senior, a high school freshman, an 8th grader, and two elementary school students at Southeast Elementary School. I have been an active participant engaging in our community for over the last 15 years. Not only did I work for the city of Brighton with the Youth Commission, driving programs cradle to career, I also was one of the first founders of the Image Summit where we help you guys learn to have policy governance. I then worked with the school district in the superintendent's office, learning about legal counsel and also working with charter schools at that time. I worked as a bilingual para at Northeast Elementary School. I have a long list of career aspirations that I've made my way through, but right now I'm a business owner here locally and a philanthropist. I do my best to serve our community in need. Our company has served 10,000 mills to people in need over the last five years utilizing grant funding. I am excited and eager to have the opportunity to utilize the same skills that I'm using in the 27J schoolroom, school board room at the city council office. And what I can tell you is that I have prepared. My resume has me ready. I have seen this city inside and out. I've lived in the trailer park across the street from Taco Loco. My family is engraved here. My husband graduated from Brighton High School. I am passionate about serving all of you and making sure that you have a public servant and not a politician in Board Three. And nobody came and asked me if I wanted to run this race. I've been preparing, studying, and being ready to run this race for a really long time. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Peter Padilla. I want to thank the Brighton Economic Development Corporation and our Youth Commission for having us here this evening. I would have referred to them as art as opposed to RAT, but just wanted to elevate them just a slight amount there. I'm so glad that all of you are here this evening. I find it interesting as I look down the table to realize somebody had commented on Facebook, "I'm the only person on the city council and the only person running for city council who's actually a Brightonite." I started here. I grew up here. I went to high school here. I graduated here. I moved away for a while while I went to college and I came back. This is my community. I care deeply about Brighton. I care about what happens here. I care about our history. We were a town of 10,000 people when I was here, but my dad's family moved here in 1942. My mom's family moved here in 1956. I'm deeply rooted in the history of what is Brighton. But I also care as much about where we're going. What are we going to do? Who are we going to be as a city and what is our identity? That's why I'm here, is helping us to make that transition, helping us to grow. And on the city council, my job, what I care most about, is making sure that we are looking out on the horizon. We have an amazing staff that does all of the work to make that vision come to reality and make sure that we are hearing what everybody in the community has to say. But our job is to look farther out into the future and make sure that we're prepared for that future and make sure that we make this the best possible city that we can. So I'm honored to have served on this council for the last four years. I am excited about the opportunity to do so for the next four and I want to make sure that this is not either our first or our last conversation in figuring out where we can go together. Thank you.
Now, we're going to go on to the first question. And we're going to start with Councilman Padilla on the right. And then we're going to go to the right. Sorry. Okay. Question is, what proactive steps do you propose the city take to keep and attract retail, industrial, and other commercial businesses of all sizes?
One of the most important things we can do actually is to stay out of the way and allow business owners to run their businesses, allow them to come to the community, allow them to bring great ideas and develop them and move forward with them. Making sure that our regulations are there to protect the community or to make sure that people are safe within the community. But our really, our biggest job is to allow entrepreneurs to work, to allow capitalism to work and stay out of the way. In addition to that, we work very hard to make sure that we are providing good economic support for our Economic Development Corporation and we're empowering them to negotiate and make attractive offers to those businesses that we want to attract to the community. Our biggest target is getting what we would consider primary employers instead of service level employers into the community. And that may involve doing some recruiting and enticing businesses to come here. Thank you.
For me, I am a small business owner here in the city of Brighton. And not only am I a small business owner in the city of Brighton, I have multiple businesses across the Denver metro. And I have the privilege of serving as an executive director for EDC in a small business seat that I interviewed for a few years ago. And through that, I have learnt so much about how the community operates and how we're developing and where we're looking to find people to come into our community and how we become a community that's inclusive. And we want people to come here. Whether we wanted to stay small or not, in the past, as a community, the reality is we've hit 50,000 people. And our community deserves the infrastructure for that. And so not only do we want these people to come into our community and be able to build and thrive, we want to make sure that we have set ourselves up adequately as a community so that all of you don't feel a negative impact with that. So my suggestion is we cut a little red tape, like Peter Padilla said, and we allow these businesses to come in here and start building and making a better life for their families.
I think that the city of Brighton right now is doing a great job of bringing, bringing some diverse businesses in. We want large, we want small, and we want everything in between. And a good way to do that, and it's already in progress, is just showing how diverse, our city is. And also showing how vibrant, you know, we can be as a city. So that the way, the way we project ourselves outwardly when these businesses look to come in, one way to do that is to, you know, make the town center vibrant and take our tapestry that is Brighton with all of our, all of our eclectic arts and all of our very beautiful individuals that we have, different opinions and different sides, just to project those to businesses and draw people in that way. It's been working. We're growing and we're going to continue to grow. Thank you for the question. We've been doing a great job trying to attract businesses, but what are the issues, what are the pain points that, that the business owners are having into growing in Brighton? What are the red tape? I mean, that was said right here as a commonality and trying to get through any of that, any of those hurdles would be a great way to attract more businesses. Cleaning up the blight, there's still a lot of great progress in making our downtown better, but what's the next step in supporting that DDA that we're trying to get through really soon? Because the Bura is expiring in the core of downtown really soon. And also working with our larger developers, this Prairie Center that we're all sitting in here, this beautiful facility, I mean, they've done a great job on making it the way it is, but where, how are we going to get to that next level and working with those developers to get to that next level?
Yes, thank you for the question. It's hard to come up with something unique that hasn't already been said really, but I think with the EDC and the downtown partnership that we're forming, those are great tools, if you will, for the businesses. And I think EDC does a great job at attracting small businesses as well as the larger ones. We've got the Olive Garden. I'm going to start mentioning Cheddar's a lot. I got my dog parked that way. So anyway, yeah, I just think we continue to do what we can to support the businesses but to, yes, to get out, get out of their way and let them be a business and do the best they can.
I want to echo just a little bit as far as streamlining and making it a little bit easier for, for folks to come in. I also want to kind of touch on the small business piece of it. I think oftentimes I hear people in the community saying, "The businesses downtown just come and go. They're here and then they're not anymore," right? So maybe communicating resources a little bit better, because there are resources. EDC has wonderful resources. They have grant programs. They partner with the SBDC as well. I've taken classes with the SBDC and they are super helpful when you're getting a business up and going. So if you can have a good, a really good base when you're starting a business, you've got a better opportunity for success and to stay and help our downtown area grow and really all of our, all of Brighton.
I'm going to kind of go off the same thing with, you know, cutting some of that red tape and streamlining our permits and licensing, really showcasing what Brighton can actually offer to businesses and paying attention to the fact that, yes, while we have our downtown district and it's extremely important, we also have other small businesses in the city that require attention and forward, straight through resources. And they deserve our support as well. So I think just streamlining, streamlining the services and making sure they can get connected with those that offer services.
Great. Thank you. We're going to go into our next question. And we're going to start with Ms. Williams and heading towards the left. So our second question is, "The Brighton Youth Commission is one way that our city incorporates youth voice. What other ideas do you have to involve youth voice and engagement as a policymaker?"
Well, there's a couple of different things that we can do. It depends on what the youth is really interested in. I think if they are interested in maybe possibly owning a small business in the long run, they can maybe partner with some of our local businesses to kind of get a little bit more information on that. We can incorporate them in more of our boards, because I do understand, you know, they have the regular council commission and whatnot, but I think, yeah, just getting them involved with anything that we possibly can. The only way they're going to have that opportunity is if we offer it to them.
There are spots open on a lot of our boards and commissions that are specific for our youth. Brighton Legacy Foundation specifically has two spots. We had two spots filled for a very short amount of time. Otherwise, we've had one and there's always been a spot open. I know there's spots open on other boards. So there is opportunity for our youth to get more involved with opportunities that are already there. We don't have to create them. They're there, they're there for the taking. And then I think getting involved in campaigns like this is a fantastic idea. Come door knocking with me. I need door knockers on Saturday, right? Interview candidates. I just interviewed with someone from Brighton Youth Commission. They're all fantastic ways to get involved in your local government and understand what's, what's going on from, from a young age.
Other ways that the youth can... I think the internship programs that the city has, I think, are very helpful for some of these kids that can come in and just get a little bit of taste, you know, over the summer of what one job would entail and get a little bit of taste of that. I love it that, I know this is going away from the question, but I love the fact that the Brighton Youth Commission gets to go to Washington DC. Hopefully that gets to continue. I'm not sure where we're at on that, but I think it's really important. We have an awesome commission and I think it's important that they get that opportunity to do that as well. I'm at a loss otherwise.
Thank you. And thank you for the question. I think it's, the Brighton Youth Commission has been a great voice, but I like how you're trying to step out of the bounds and find other ways to reach out to the youth. And one way is every high school, and I think even middle school usually has maybe some sort of a student government that may not be involved in the Youth Commission. So reach out to them, reach out to the student government, see who wants to be involved in some other types of youth groups that can have a voice in our community. Also, in, in the faith-based community, there are youth groups as well that we don't always hear from. And understanding what their pain points are, or not just pain points, but what their needs and issues are important too. So those are some great ways to reach out as well.
Excellent questions. You can tell how good a question is by the amount of awkward silence following that question. So just so everybody knows, I'm not a public speaker, but I am a very good public listener. And that's why I think it'd be great for this. I want the, the youth to understand, we should understand, they will be leaving our city and our nation soon. Sooner than you think. I'm a grandpa. Their oldest is four years and it just flew by. Listening to our youth, having raised 10 kids and having all their, all their friends come to the house, we know what issues they're facing. We know they all have very strong opinions and we've taught them to be leaders. I want that to continue within the city of Brighton. Let's teach all of our youth to be leaders. Also, mental health support, that's, that's something that's fairly very important to me and close to my heart. That, that's going to be something that, there's, there's programs out there already about mentoring, internships, entrepreneur programs. They're already out there and they do exist. Let's get them connected.
Can you repeat the question, Ally?
Yeah. So the Brighton Youth Commission is one way that our city incorporates youth voice. What other ideas do you have to involve youth voice and engagement as a policymaker?
So unlike the last question where I said there's a lot of work to be done when it comes to business in Brighton or when it comes to housing even for me, when it comes to youth, there are so many cool things happening in the city of Brighton. And I don't just mean at the Youth Commission where you guys are tackling suicide prevention, where you are creating programs cradle to career and allow kids to chase their dreams in terms of if they're going to go to college. But in 27J, we focused on CTE programming. We have a board that comes and talks to us that's called the, I know I was going to forget. Well, our policy board that comes, that our youth council, and they talk to us every single board meeting about policy that they want to change. They're very active. And having five kids in the city of Brighton at all different ages, I can see all the opportunities that there are in athletics specifically, so much opportunity on athletics. When we look at the new football fields and that infrastructure that was created or the baseball fields are always booming with cheering fans. So I think you guys have done a really good job as youth, creating programming and driving programs in our community that are great. Where I see some...
Time is up.
I think it's a fantastic question. There are fantastic opportunities. We have an amazing youth services program and the youth drive it and drive an incredible program. Speak Week, the Image Summit, the Youth Commission. I will say that I'm so incredibly proud of our Youth Commission when they represent the city of Brighton at national conferences. We have the best questions. We have the best representation. We have a brilliant set of people who are representing us there. What I would like to do, and they'll all get mad at me for suggesting this, but what I would like to do is create a seat for a youth representative at study sessions for the city council. That could come from the Youth Commission, that could come from a broader election, but I would really like to have a youth voice listening and informing us at our study session. I can't change the laws to put them on the city council in a formal council meeting, but I think the opportunity to listen and engage when we're actually doing our learning and when we're informing the council to make a decision.
All right. So our next question, we're going to start with Ms. Carvahal and we're going to go to the right. All right. So the question is, "In a world with so much division, what will you do to build bridges and work seamlessly with your colleagues with differing opinions?"
Yeah, I think that that's something that I demonstrate right now, serving on the 27J education board. We don't all agree. We don't all sit at the same table at night for dinner, right? We, we have vastly different lives and being able to collaborate with them and have open-minded conversations and welcome different opinions is something that I take very seriously. And I tell my family often that if I ever lose my soul in that service, that I can't run any longer. I think that those opinions and those values that other people hold make me better. They challenge the things that I want. I was at an event recently and Dr. Fidler said, "Melinda Carvahal will listen, learn, and then she'll change her mind if that's what needs to happen." And I think that is really, really valuable and that's something that I promise to do as your elected official, is have an open mind, listen and learn and be willing to change what I believe is true based on the needs of my community and their values and opinions.
Excellent question. Thank you. Division, division can be a big, big problem if we don't handle it correctly and if we don't recognize it. Division can turn into a much bigger thing. As far as building bridges, I've been attending some city council meetings and study sessions and they're doing a great job of each of them working as part of a team to run the city. They've been doing an awesome job with that and I see that they, they are making those connections and it really, it really impressed me and I would, I came out with great encouragement. And it really impressed me and I came out with great encouragement of each one of those meetings. Because we now, that's the head of our city and it's projecting onto our citizens. So it's also on each of us to go out and reach and get to know people. And talking to people, getting to know them face-to-face, one-on-one. That's how we create bridges and we do it one person at a time, one-on-one.
Great question. I love building bridges. About four years ago, when I was ending my election, I reached out to those that were supporting my opponent and we did have a conversation about how we can come together on some of the issues. And I'm happy to continue that, especially after this election. Regardless of who wins in either of these contentious awards, that we'll come together on what our commonalities are and find ways to make Brighton a great place and a good place to live in. I've done that also even on the state side or the national side. I've talked to those that want elections, whether I've supported them or not and happy to talk to them about what we have in common and go forward from there. I've in the past even gone to breakfast with some of our county commissioners. One of them was in the room. I don't see it right now. But yeah, happy to do that and find ways to make our community great. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, in my time sitting on council, there have been some divisiveness. And I think I've been able to show that I'm able to work with, again, whoever is on council by keeping an open mind and listening to everyone's opinion. Because everyone's opinion is important. It may not always be right, but no. But it's just as important as my opinion, right? But I think in the end, yes, the commonality is that we're all here for the community and to do what's best for, you know, our residents and what they would want us to do. And I think we just continue to do that and keep that in the forefront of our minds, why we're here.
One of the reasons why I decided to run was because of the uncertainty that I felt around me. A lot of that is the divisiveness that a lot of us feel often. So it really is gonna be one of my top priorities to collaborate with the other members of city council. We're not always going to agree. You can see when you go to a city council meeting, right? Sometimes it's unanimous, sometimes it's not. We're not always gonna agree. There's gonna be different conversations had. And it is really of top priority to me to turn the divisiveness and the uncertainty around and collaborate together, manage promises together and work for the greater good of this community.
So working together and having those awkward conversations is something that you really have to do. Not everybody's gonna agree on everything and everybody's opinion is valid. But finding that commonality and learning to work together is extremely important. Not everybody has to think the same. The difference of opinion can actually create some pretty amazing ideas. And that can actually create a pretty cool place to be.
When we're talking about the city council, culture in the community is set from visible places. So when we're sitting and we're on television and we're discussing something that's important, we're talking about kitchen table issues. What affects us in the city of Brighton? It has very little to do with standard or traditional politics. It really has to do with what's best for the community, how do we develop the community and how do we take care of each other and take care of our community's needs. Divisiveness comes occasionally from not being sure that we wanna do that in the same way. And the way we get through that is to have adult conversations. We talk about what is the best thing in the long term, what are the actions that will take us there? And how can we empower staff to get there? And how can we create the environment for our residents to get there and have some self-determination? So I think it's the nature of the conversation and the nature of, I'll say, being grownups and having deep conversations. Thank you.
Okay, so next we're gonna go into questions from the public. So if you would like to form a line at this microphone over here, I'm gonna read the rules again really quick. Also, again, applause will be allowed only at the beginning and at the end of the program to maximize time for discussion. There will be no outbursts, cheering or jeering or disruptions. Audience members must remain respectful and refrain from interrupting candidates or moderators or people asking questions. And, let me see here. Okay. Questions must be relevant to city issues and addressed to all candidates equally. Personal attacks or questions targeting a single candidate will not be allowed.
Good evening.
Really quick, can I say who's gonna start with this question? Okay, so we're gonna start with Councilwoman Tadeo and then we're gonna go towards the left.
I have a few questions.
Also, each candidate will answer every single question. Start with one question and then go to the back of the line.
My first question is, with raising your hands, how many of you have read the comprehensive plan for the city of Brighton from 2016 to the present? Which are our strategies, they have principles and policies that are involved that are still in use today. How many of you have read it? Raise your hands. Thank you.
Okay. The Colorado State-funded school lunch program is scheduled to end in January of 2026. If a state deal is not made, how do you intend to collaborate with the 27J school board to keep our lunches free for students in Brighton?
I guess I would encourage the city and the school district to work together to, you know, find money. Find grant money, find any kind of money, do fundraising, anything that we can to continue to help those kids get those free lunches, free meals. I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, but I think working as a community together, I think we can make those things happen.
This may not be popular. Not every school lunch needs to be free. Mine was not free when I grew up and sometimes it doesn't need to be free. Maybe we need to help those that are in real need, but not everybody's in that sort of need.
I recently attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago with the city council meeting with the 27J board members. And I saw a great collaboration between the two. City council worked together as a team and then also recognizing 27J schools, discussing their issues, what they were up against. And I believe that this coming up, I'm sure that they've had discussions about this and they're gonna reach a resolve.
Well, one of the ways that we can begin working on that right now is on the ballot. There'll be MM and LL. So if we're interested in making sure that our community continues to eat, that would be really important. I am concerned about us not having the funding to serve everyone in our community. Since we lost the meals, since we got free meals for everyone, we've had an increase that's astronomical, over 200%. And I don't know the exact number. I wish I had that here for you tonight. But there's a need in our community for food. And I think it's really important that we are working collectively together to make that happen. And I don't know what the collaboration would look like in terms of funding from a city and a school district, considering the district operates through multiple municipalities and counties. But I would encourage us all to vote on MM, LL in this election.
That is exactly step number one, is we have an opportunity to replace some of that funding at the state level. And MM and LL are critically important. Having kids who have had breakfast, who have had lunch, means that they're focusing better, they're performing better academically. And removing the stigma from, "You're getting a free lunch only because you're poor", is critically important to having people actually take advantage of those programs. So it is critically important to do that and to provide those meals. There's not much we can do at the city level, but I am worried significantly and I am working to help influence our county commissioners, who do have a role in replacing some of the SNAP funds and ensuring that we have funding available for the food in addition to the school lunch program. I don't know that we as a city council can do much directly, but we can speak about that as an important issue in the community. And so we can become advocates and work actively to ensure that we're protecting those programs.
I'll just echo, I think we have the opportunity, right, on the ballots to vote on these kind of things. We also, it's really just not something you can answer right off the top of your head, right? Maybe there is funding to fill this gap, if there is a gap. Maybe we take a closer look at what the needs are. Because I tend to agree a little bit with Greg because there are kids that really need it and there are kids that don't. And then there's also those middle-of-the-road kids that don't qualify for free lunches. But they're hungry. They're not eating. They're not getting breakfast. They're not getting food on Mondays when they don't go to school. So maybe a little bit more work to do there along with voting at election time.
This is something that is actually really important to me. You know, I grew up as the kid receiving free lunches. And sometimes that is your only meal. And so I think being a voice as council and teaching people about the important things that are on the ballot, like the LL and MM, and really working with the community so they understand the importance of voting yes for this, is gonna be a huge movement. It is something that we need and every child deserves to eat.
Thank you. We're gonna go to the next question. And for this one, we're gonna start with Ms. Collins and move towards the right.
How will you make Brighton a better place for kids like me to grow up?
I think that all the topics that we've talked about tonight, additional topics, affordable housing, sustainability, all of those things that we are planning for now, for the future, are what is going to make Brighton better for our youth. City council's responsibility is to look at the vision of the future and the goals, the big goals, the big picture, right? So that our youth are safe and they do have affordable housing. And they do have jobs to come to. They don't have to drive out of the city, right? We're working on bringing jobs into Brighton. And we're not just doing that for the people right now in the workforce. We're doing that for the up-and-coming youth as well.
Hi. So it's going to be down to the programs for the youth that we have. So that way you have a place where you can engage and have your voices being heard. Also, along with supporting our infrastructure and our economic development. So that way you do have places that you can work and enjoy as you grow up. And ensuring that you have things like lunch, should you need it.
That's a fantastic question. It was a question that I asked 50 years ago. It's a question that we still need to be asking today. What we're doing today to help is increasing the number of recreation facilities. We're taking care of our parks. We're adding to the rec center. We're adding some playgrounds, fields, so that we can have soccer and lacrosse and baseball and softball and all of those things happening on a regular basis. So we've got active things. What that all really leads to is that we're caring about public health from everybody in the community, from childcare up through soccer programs and rec league programs, up through high school programs where we help with applying to college and we help with filling out financial aid paperwork. And then all the way up through how do you involve yourself in the community? And how do you become a leader here? And then having facilities like this, so that we have our active adults, our youth at the other end of the scale, with scrimmage tournaments and craft fairs and all of the things that take place here at the senior center. So looking at our whole life.
I love this question. I think when I think about my five kids, like the world that they're growing up and what's scary about it and what don't we understand? And sitting in the city council meeting that was partnered with the school board last week, it was really valuable. It was valuable for a lot of reasons. I think that when we're good partners and we're having communication and conversations about what resources are available on both sides and we're breaking down communication and sharing that vision and mission and making sure that we're serving kids 24 hours a day, we're better for you. And we're active in providing you the services that you desire. And I think 27J is doing a lot of things when it comes to that, looking at CTE programming, thinking about the Thinking Classroom, giving you guys all these opportunities. And when we're partnering with the city to open the schools, to have rec facilities available for those sports, not just the ones that we're building, but that collaboration and that partnership, I think is really important. So I hope that we continue to open those doors and break down barriers between elected official councils so that we can truly provide the services that you guys desire as kids and need.
Excellent question, Mike, young lady. I love the youth in this community. I work closely with the youth in my church as well. And I just love everything that you bring to us. We are supposed to protect you and keep you safe. And that's what we do. We work hard every day and it's almost always for the youth. Okay, I've been working since I was eight years old on a paper route to help support my family. As I got older, supporting my own family, I realized how important it is to keep the youth safe. That's where I come from. I work in a job that's very stressful and I help people that are going through trauma and tragedies and I help them resolve that. So as a youth, we promise to protect you and to give you the resources you need. If there is a need of counseling and anything that you need, we will get it for you.
Thank you for the question. I'm glad that you care about what is important to the kids here in our community. And like a lot of the questions, or like a lot of the answers were put out to be like improving our rec center, expanding our rec center. But if you play on some of the playground equipment, you've probably noticed some of it has been updated and brand new. And that's one of the enhanced features in improving and making Brighton a great place to live in. If you've been to Benedict Park recently, do you know where that is? Out by Southeast Elementary? We put in a playground equipment that's for like bigger kids for when you're like 12 and up. So you can go like Ninja Warrior and have fun and not just be on the equipment that's just for the six-year-olds. So we are doing that. We wanna keep that going. So thank you for that question.
Yes, thank you for the question. It's hard to come up with something different when I'm the last one. But I think something that I'm proud of is we brought back the CTE programs for the students to be able to learn a trade. As well as, we also offer the FASPA nights for the, for, you know, I think that's something that's important. So that if that's an avenue that somebody, a youth wants to pursue. And we have a lot of really great programs through the rec center, through the recreation department. There's all kinds of things that I think we can just continue with that. And it's hard to think of something, but this one you already said.
So for our next question, we're gonna start with Mr. Forsythe and we're gonna go towards the left.
Good afternoon. My question to you is, if you could tell us a little bit more about your experience in local government?
That's a great question for the first-timer. I have not served in any local government position. My strengths come from serving where I was. Always serving and helping in the schools programs and church programs when my kids grew up. That's where our strengths are. And I've spent the last, what, 31 years raising kids and that's where I come from. So a lot of experience comes from that. I do pay attention to what goes on around me and realizing, you know, federal, state and city governments, why they're, what the importance is there. Do you know that 90% of voting happens within the cities which we live? Not outside of that, so 90% of that. So I understand the importance of it and that's why I'm running. And I do want to hold a position on the city council.
This is my favorite question because I had no idea that I wanted to serve as a public servant when I started dabbling in this years ago. And I think actually working with the youth commission was my first experience in truly understanding local government. Not only did I get to open doors and meet elected officials as they came to the Image Summit and we hosted that, but I also got to have a lot of conversations in those rooms and start to truly understand what was happening and how we were serving kids and how we were serving adults and how the streets were running and how the water was going. And every door that I've opened over the last eight years has led me to more questions. That's the real answer. I don't know that much. But what I do know is I've served on the school board for the last two years effectively. That's part of my experience. As a small business owner, I really look at policy. I understand policy. I know how to follow it. I know how to rewrite it. I know how to help us come up with plans and setting goals and making sure that we're following the law. I know a decent amount about our city. Today, someone said, "If you looked at an elephant from one side, you would see..." Oh, I'll have to save that for next time.
I grew up in this community and I started as a volunteer in this community about the age of five years old when I started delivering Meals on Wheels with my mother over the summer. I chair the board for Almost Home, which is our local homeless shelter and homelessness prevention charity. And then as a city council member, I serve on the Brighton Housing Authority Board. I chair the Adams County Opium Devailment Council, where we're looking at how to address the issues of the opium crisis. And I also work on the Airport Coordinating Committee, where I'm working on noise complaints and how we work on developing marketing and economic development around the airports. So I represent the residents of the city of Brighton to... So I represent the residents of the city of Brighton to decisions that we make at, at the council level. But I also represent the city of Brighton to the rest of the community around us, to Adams County, to the rest of the state, figuring out how do we make things better for ourselves in this community and how do we raise everybody else up with us?
Hello. So I don't have any actual experience in local government. However, through my ventures of the last few years, I have attended majority of the city council meetings, study sessions, and have gotten to know quite a bit of the businesses around here so that way I can kind of see how that functions together. I do step in and drop in from time to time to local boards to kind of see what's going on. And I just do that just so that way I can gain the information and knowledge about kind of what's going on in our city and to just try to pay attention.
This is my first venture into formal local city government. I too have attended quite a few city council meetings, study sessions. I did the funding request at the study session in August for Brighton Legacy Foundation. So I presented at the study session as well. I've visited several meetings of our boards and committees recently. I've visited Brighton Youth Commission. I've visited Borough, I've visited Parks and Rec. And I'm currently attending Civic Academy. So Civic Academy, for those of you who are not familiar, teaches you all the things about the city, how the city runs, sustainability. Borough came, we're meeting at the rec to talk Parks and Rec this week. We're gonna be at the police department. So it's been a very immersive and very educating experience so far.
Thank you. So my first experience with local government was when I joined the Brighton Legacy Foundation as well about nine or 10 years ago. And I as well, before I got on council in 2020, was attending almost every single city council meeting and the study sessions to again, just be informed and know what was going on in the city. But as a council member, I've had the opportunity to sit on the boards, some of them Brighton Housing Authority, Historic Preservation Commission. And I think you, you learn a lot from that. But I've also done a few ride-alongs with the police department. I think you learn a lot, a lot from those ride-alongs as well.
Thank you for the question. Local government affects us more than what's going on at the state Capitol and what's been, and also what's going on in Washington, in my opinion. So that's a very important question. I've been your mayor and member of city council for the past several years. In that time, we're, we're all asked to serve on different boards and commissions. I've been on some local boards and also some regional boards like Dr. COG, which stands for, it's not a doctor, it stands for Denver Regional Council of Governments. I'm on that one right now. And I'm also part of the executive committee for Metro Mayor's Caucus. And so being exposed to those regional councils and advocating for the needs of Brighton, as I do, also with the Adams County Council of Governments and the regional transportation forums and advocating for improvements to like I-76 in Bromley and the Highway 7 stuff. You remember all the potholes that we were all driving on for a while? They're fixed finally, you know? So advocating for that, it's been something I've been doing for a while. And I was also on, I'll, I'll hint on this, I was also on the Brighton Police Citizens Academy a few years ago, so.
So our next question, we are gonna start with Mayor Mills and then we're gonna go towards the right.
Yeah, I didn't know your rules beforehand, so I'm kind of having to mix this question up a little bit. In our comprehensive plan, a lot of what was in it had to do with our farming and agricultural community. So I want to know what your plan is, working with the farms and ranches and Adams County to protect these lands and for them to be able to continue to farm and agricultural production, as this is a very important part of Brighton and its legacy. And we have three farms where the owners, the generational, will be retiring because they're in their 80s. You talk about food for schools. I need to know what you're gonna do to help keep it provided.
One way to help with our farms is to support the historic Splinter Valley. And that's a farm preservation in partnership with Adams County and keep that going and support those farmers in what their efforts are to see what their legacies are as we go along in the future.
I was gonna say, you know, focus on the Splinter Valley as well. We're already doing something about that to try to preserve as much property as we can. And I think it's important that we keep them as working farms as long as possible. But I think in the end, when the families are retiring and they sell off the land, the person who buys that land can, you know, do what they wish, unfortunately. But, you know, we, we can do as much as we can to try to preserve it because you're right, it is part of our heritage and why we're here.
Now, one thing I'll just touch on is I think the importance for collaboration on both sides. We've talked about divisiveness. We know we've had a little controversy recently over farmland and things like that. And I think both sides participating for the, the greater good of the farm and the community is, is really important in getting that work done.
It's about meeting them where they are and seeing how we can truly support them. Whether it's possibly looking into other options of other farmers wanting to lease their land as they age out and are ready to retire so we can continue to farm that land and continue to, to provide the food for the community to, I don't know, whatever it is that they will need. Because we need to really support our farms and make sure that we have their back. Because if we don't have farms, we don't have food. So that is extremely important to us.
Great question, Kitty. There are two things that we can do and one that we can't. So the first thing that we can do is encourage our landowners and our farmers to participate in conservation easements in order to keep some of that farmland around the community as operable as they are willing to do and want to do with what they own. The second thing that we can do is make sure that when we're looking at our history, our historic preservation, and our museum, all of the things that are the identity of the city of Brighton, that we continue to retain that core and that root of an agricultural past. The thing that we can't do is make a decision for those farmers, what they're going to do with their land, their property, when they decide that they're going to retire. If they want to lease it to somebody else to operate it, that's their decision. If they want to sell it for development, that's their decision. That's the joy of private property rights in, in, in the country. So we can do what we can to encourage them. We can do what we can to support them economically and support them culturally within the community, but we can't necessarily make their decisions for them.
I love this question. I just spent a week out at WSU, the Brett Lab in Washington State, and learning about the land and the food and how that all operates and utilizing that in our business is so important. So I echo what you said on what we can and can't do as city council members. But I think something's missing in Brighton in telling the story of them every single day. There's farmer markets all over, but in Brighton, despite having this rich cultural farmers, we're not having those type of events where we're celebrating that food and bringing people together around it so that we, that we cherish it more. And so, yes, I stopped and shop at Palazzi Farm and stopped at the things, but how do we talk about those farms? How do we embrace that and then utilize that food as a community so that we start celebrating the work that they're doing so that they want to continue the legacy?
Farms are a beautiful part of Brighton and I love them because every time I have to drive back from Denver or some other city, I love driving in and seeing growth. I love seeing the fields. I love smelling whatever the crop is. It's fantastic. I'm just gonna go back just for a moment. The comprehensive plan that Brighton's put together right now, just had the kickoff meeting a few weeks ago. So this next year is super important for every citizen to come forward, say what you want. And part of that is supporting the farmers any way, any way that we can. We want to, we want to keep that balance. We want to keep a balance of having a, a hub in the city in downtown, if you want to call it that, downtown Brighton. Keep the charm and character there, but also have those farms and we want that diversity and that balance. So maintaining that balance, I would vote to support our farmers any way we can if it comes up in, in, in front of the city council.
Thanks. So our next question, we are going to start with Councilman Vidia and go towards the right.
Good evening. I am Jessica Fedler, the Executive Director at Almost Home. And my question for you this evening is with all this growth and the wonderful things that you've talked about coming to our community will also come an increase in significant issues facing this community such as housing instability and food insecurity. And I'd like to hear from each one of you what strategies you, you want to advocate for to address these issues? And then also, what's the city's role, do you believe, in addressing these issues that are here in our community now?
It almost feels like a setup for this one to be my question first. So that indicates that I am the president of the board for Almost Home and I sit on our housing authority. So this is an issue that I've invested time and energy into, I've invested money into, and I've advocated for the issue on behalf of the city. So I, I think that looking at growth, looking at the positives and the negatives that, that come with growth, looking at our current economic environment and the, the greater risks for people, means that we need to be creative. We need to make investments of time. We need to make investments of, of money. I, I've pushed to make sure that the city is doing what we can to support Almost Home because Almost Home is a, a homegrown organization. But I also want to make sure that when we look at our downtown areas, we're looking at what services do people need and how do we provide those services? Before we start to look at how are people a hindrance to us or how are people in, in the way? So we need to invest time, energy, creativity.
Yeah, I think that it starts with conversations and awareness. So I don't serve on the board of Almost Home. However, I've been a philanthropist for Almost Home for the last five years, making sure that we're playing our part as community members for the board. And I think when we look at 27J and those mills and we think about getting rid of those things or the grant funding that you guys lost from Adams County, it really is a collective effort. It definitely is our responsibility as community members, as elected officials, as public servants, to step forward and have ideas about how we're going to build solutions around this. I think one of my biggest frustrations as we talk about the comprehensive plan, we bring in a lot of people to give us plans and then we never have action. And so I want us not only to create plan after plan after plan that costs us money, but I want us to put those plans into action. And I hope that we're thinking about safety and homelessness and resources when we're building out that plan and we're tapping into our community for that information so we can be successful.
Well, following the expert in this, Peter, I, I think that it's about sustainability. And I'm gonna bring up balance again. It's important that we do, we do balance as the numbers grow, as, as people move in, as our population gets bigger. It's perfect timing with the comprehensive plan being formed right now and getting these voices out here. Okay, what do we anticipate that we're gonna need? How do we look to other cities that have grown from 20,000 to 60,000 rather quickly? Let's see what they've come up with and let's implement those and bring those in front of city council and see how we can tackle each of these issues. Renewable energy is one, one of my big things. I want to be sure that we're, we're cognizant of that as far as cost and feasibility, bringing those in to help us as we grow.
Thank you for the question. Homelessness is an issue everywhere and we, as we grow into being a bigger stakeholder in the metro Denver community, we will continue to have homelessness, unfortunately. But what we can do is hire a homeless coordinator as a city employee that works with organizations like Almost Home and any other organization that can bring resources to those that are homeless to get out of homelessness. Now, you can't force anyone to get out of homelessness. Some people actually don't want to be out of homelessness for whatever reason. But as you keep offering the resources, we want them to know Brighton is a place that will help those that want to get out of homelessness to get out of homelessness.
I agree. You, you have to reach out to the ones that want to help. But I think we continue to encourage, if that's the right word, our developers to build affordable housing, to try to alleviate some of those issues. I think we also need to get back to focusing on mental health issues. And I know that there's, you know, money going away and grant money that's, we're having issues, but to me, that's, that just makes it harder, in my opinion, right? I mean, that's what it does for me. But I just think we focus a little bit more on the mental health issues and the, and the rest can follow. But just continue to work together with the organization and do what we can for everyone.
I agree with the majority of what everyone else has said. To kind of go on top of that, Brighton Police Department has a really fantastic program, the co-responder program. And they have mental health clinicians that go out with the officers on calls. That trickles down to our homeless population. And that is not just that mental health clinician going out on the call. But if there are, if there's follow-up needed, if there are resources that are needed after that, there's caseworkers that follow up with those people and provide them with those resources, whether it's mental health resources, whether they need food, substance abuse, you know, whatever the case may be, there is a, a caseworker that can follow up from, from that call, call that went out to Brighton Police Department. And it's a really fantastic program and I think they're doing great work.
And I did see that you guys just lost your ten of funding and yeah, that's, that's a heavy hit. I would like to, for the city to really hone in on local owners that have space available where we can create lower income housing. Also possibly working with our local farms to bring kind of food to table type of situation so that way people have fresh fruits and veggies. And currently I'm actually working on trying to get additional services for our police department for substance abuse. And so that way they have an additional service to go along with the ones that she was just talking about.
All right, so we are gonna have three more questions and, because we're running a little bit short on time. Okay, so this next question, we're gonna start with Ms. Williams and go towards the left.
Thank you so much for allowing me to ask you a question today. And similar to the last question, speaking about the rapid growth of the community, I ask you guys how you guys plan to keep a relationship with the community despite the rapid growth?
It's really just about getting out there and being available to meet with people and talk to them and see exactly what's going on. What do they see as the issues? What do they see as being something good in, in the community? What do they need help and support with? And it's, it's really just about getting out there, being active, whether it's utilizing our website, which actually I really love the new design of our website. But it's, it's really meeting people where they are, understanding the needs.
One of the things that I've been talking about and talking about and talking about the last few months is communication. I think we can do a better job and maybe streamline our communication a little bit. If it's not better communication, really just pointing people in the right direction of where they can find things. I just got an email from a community member today who's doing Civic Academy with me and he's trying to get a podcast started just about Brighton called The Brighton Zone, which I'm really excited to talk to him about. So that's a great opportunity, I think, with keeping in touch with the community and, and making sure that everyone still feels engaged. I was listening to a Lakewood city council meeting a couple of weeks ago and they mentioned that they're doing ward meetings. So Ward One meeting, this is what we're gonna talk about this time, educating the community on, on different topics and things like that. And I kind of thought that was intriguing too, to kind of small, you know, make the crowd a little bit smaller, make it a little bit more intimate and, and educate the community and keep in touch.
Thank you for stealing part of my answer. No, I, I think communication is key. When you have the rapid growth, I think there's, there is a lack of understanding out there. I was one of those people. I didn't understand how government worked or how the city worked and why are we building more houses and why is there another barber shop or, you know, the things that we don't have control of as a city council. But I think what's important is that we do focus on, you know, the, the outward five, 10-year plan further on out to make sure that the things that are needed are getting taken care of, like the infrastructure and, you know, everything that we keep talking about. But I think somehow getting the community to get more involved in, with my Civic Academy is awesome. Didn't have that when I ran for council the first time. So I think it's a very good tool. But things like that with just people getting more engaged and getting themselves informed helps a lot.
Thank you. Great answers. You know, we used to, before I got on council, we tried the ward meetings, but they were not very well attended. My first year on council, I think three people showed up to ward meetings. And so that's a lot of where the stem of the city barbecue came out. I know it's, it's a big event, but it does bring out a lot of people. And I, I don't just sit under the tent talking to people. I walk around talking to people. And so that's one way to do that is to, no matter if our population And so that's one way to do that is to, no matter if our population is 38,000 or 88,000, continue those city events, city barbecue, summer fest, flicks and kicks. I mean, we just got creative last weekend and had the flicks and kicks in the fall to go along with Halloween, you know? Continue our tree lighting the first weekend of December, second weekend of December, we have the parade, the light parade, summer fest, everything. And just make sure we are your hometown community, no matter how big we're getting.
These are all fantastic events. I just want to say, how would you treat a neighbor when you move in, when they move in? Are you going over there, getting to know them? Are you taking them baked goods? Are you just discussing with them, getting to know who they are face to face like that? It takes every single one of us, and imagine if every citizen in Brighton did that when we had somebody move in. That's my vision of what I see. We are all brothers and sisters. We all have things in common and we all have differences. So let's celebrate each other, get to know each other and invite, invite these people to all these great events. You know, we have a chili cook-off coming up soon. We have Halloween events coming up soon. Invite all your neighbors, all those people you just, you just don't really, you don't know. Invite them, make them your friend, and I think it'll make it a greater community.
Yeah, for me, I keep saying that we've been wanting Brighton, it just feels small, but it feels big, right? It's 50,000 people and that's a lot. Despite it being 50,000 people, I cannot grocery shop currently without running into 100 people that I know. And I think the reason that that's worked for me is because I have five kids attending three schools. I'm active and engaged in showing up to different things. And, you know, my kids play football, so then I get football moms. And I am gathering community members and gathering my personal family is growing and growing in this city because of that. I want to thank Greg for finding Kevin to run against me because one of the best things that happened with that is that I've been out having pizza parties in the community and having an opportunity to shake more people's hands and get into the ward in different parks and make that happen. So that's been really good for me.
I think of that communication as we grow as a two-way street. We do, I think our communication department does an incredible job of reaching out and telling people what's happening. Where are their events? What decisions are being made? What is the city council doing? So we're informing people, although I think that our youth commission can help us to reach people who don't use all of the methods that we know how to do because I honestly don't know how to make sure that I reach. At 55, I do not communicate in the same language as my 16-year-old son. So neither the mechanisms nor the language. So that's the communicating out to make sure that we're reaching out to all of those people and making them feel welcome as they join. The second part, which is what we mostly do as the city council, that the staff doesn't do, is listen absolutely everywhere we go. As Melinda said, in the grocery store, I always run into somebody. Somebody will always stop me at Billy's, somebody will always stop me when I'm out to eat and talk to me about what it is they care about. And grocery shopping takes a long time and my child rolls his eyes at me because I've stopped again and he just takes the cart. So talk and listen.
All right, our next question, we're going to start with Ms. Carver Hall and go towards the right.
My name is Morgan Manick. My second question for tonight is a little bit heavier than my first, but I think it's a conversation we need to be having. As the numbers of youth becoming involved in substances like marijuana and nicotine at younger and younger ages, how can we as a Brighton community prevent underage access and stop the youth from coming into contact with more damaging substances?
Yeah, I'm really glad that you asked us this question, even though it is a heavy one. It's, safety is a number one priority, I think, for everyone. Like, once you see safety, everything else stops. I think that's just the way that it is. And when I think about substance use, it's really scary sending my kids off to school and having to have conversations about not eating different types of candy that they're provided or those type of things. I think it's really important that we ensure that we're holding people accountable that are providing these things for youth in our community. Oftentimes, people come to 27J and say, hey, you guys, why are we having vaping in the bathroom? And we are doing our best to prevent that, but the reality is we aren't selling vape. And so we really need to start holding people accountable for that type of work, the people that are selling that and then figuring out the root of the problem and then collectively working together as entities to make sure that we keep you safe.
This is right up my alley. I am trained in my job to remediate methamphetamine and fentanyl properties, vehicles, whatever is needed. This is what I do every day. I also help do trauma and crime scene cleaning, stuff that we don't want to have in our community. This is super important and the way to do it is to face it head-on, to know exactly what our kids are up against and what some adults are up against. It's affecting all of us. Sometimes it comes in through the adults and then to the kids. So just the other day, my wife was speaking to an officer and said, hey, what do you need from the city council to save you in Brighton? And he replied, they're doing a great job, they've given us everything we need. There's all kinds of programs that are available, suicide prevention, and if there's even talk of that, there's counseling available. So this is near and dear to my heart. We love you kids, we want to protect you.
Great question. That's definitely been an issue for decades throughout even my time as a youth. And I've seen substance abuse even at my high school back in the day, 30-plus years ago. One way to combat some of that is, I mean, I can't help some of the laws related to marijuana and any of the vices out there, but we need to increase our enforcement at those facilities that sell tobacco and vape products and make sure they're actually selling to people at age. So giving the law enforcement the resources they need to increase that enforcement, I think is going to be the next phase that we're going to go into, to supporting that.
I think one of the things we should talk about is that I think education is key. It's not going to work for every person, but I think if you're having the conversation about, you know, how it's harmful to your body, what it does, you know, those types of conversations, maybe those have gone to the wayside a little bit in the past few years and that, you know, and I agree, enforcement. Yeah, go after the people that are selling the vapes to kids that they shouldn't be and to really crack down on that. I mean, it's going to be out there, going to be able to get it, but as much as you can, yeah.
Sorry, this is going to be a little bit of what they said, but I think it stops right where it starts. I have two boys who are grown now, but they were in high school not too long ago. And I know for a fact that they know which place they can go to to not get carded, to get whatever they want. So it starts there. I also know that they have friends that experimented with those types of things when they were in high school, when they were in ninth grade, and they're still vaping. They're 23, they're 24, they're still vaping because they were able to get access to it so young. I know that they're going to turn 21 at some point and then they can make their own decisions, but at least if we can do a little bit of damage control there, we can hope that they'll make a little bit better decision when their brain is a little more developed and they're of legal age.
I honestly think that it does start at home. It's having that weird conversation with your kid and truly making them understand what it can do to your body, what exactly can happen to you. If you touch the wrong thing, it could be lights out. So it's having that important conversation. Also, if you are a parent who takes advantage of our new laws or does, you know, vaping or whatever, it's about them being cautious and keeping their stuff put away to ensure that their children are not getting a hold of it and not sharing it with their friends and not contributing to the issue.
Thank you. I'm going to focus the question just a little bit on opioid abatement because that's where I'm doing some specific work and where we've made some specific investment. So Brighton is a recipient of funds from the settlements against the pharmaceutical companies and the pharmacies and the manufacturers. And we invest some money into that and we have a large chunk of money as a county that we aim towards prevention and education, trying to make sure that people are aware of what the risks are and how to avoid it. Looking at harm reduction for people who have made a decision and face significant immediate consequences for that decision. Looking at treatment and recovery and how can we make an investment in helping people once they have, in this case, opioid and fentanyl addictions or misuse disorders. And then looking at long-term recovery and support and how do we help people to continue to contribute to our environment, society and be safe and live and thrive once they get through those issues.
Thank you.
All right, so this is going to be our last question and we're going to start with Councilwoman Deo and go to the left.
Good evening, council candidates. My name is Drew Ross. I'm the sitting president for the Brighton Fraternity Order of Police slash 48 for the Brighton Police Department. Reason I'm here today is the Brighton Police Department and the Brighton FOP and this Brighton City Council have had a historically positive relationship. What can the Brighton FOP Police Department and the city expect from you as a council person to aid in Brighton PD's ability to continue to provide world-class law enforcement services?
Thank you for the compliment. I do think that city council has done very well for the police department in supporting their needs. I feel like that the police department feels the same way in most cases. I guess just continue to support, continue to get the word out to, you know, one of the, I'm just going to go off here. One of the things that I love when I go on the ride-alongs is the fact that, and every officer that I've ridden with, how much they care about their community and the residents. And I think that just anything we can do to support them, be it, you know, more officers or I would like to see dogs trained for drugs at some point. But I think we just continue to have that open line of communication and just work together in any way that we can. I know that's kind of blanketed, but.
Oh, all right, to the left.
To the left, okay. Oh, there you are. Great, great question. I love our law enforcement. I've been, you know, I've gone on a couple of ride-alongs, I'm way overdue to go on another one, and so I look forward to going and do about it and understanding what the pain points are and what else we need to do to support our law enforcement. So I really appreciate the question. You know, in my time on council, I don't know of a single person that's currently serving or serving in the past since I've been serving that has been against our law enforcement. I was out at my day job today and speaking with a member of law enforcement in a neighboring community and I asked him about their council's support for the law enforcement in that community. And he basically said, well, we don't bother them and they don't bother us. And I thought that was pretty sad that they have that kind of relationship in that community. So continuing that, great support for our law enforcement, giving them the resources and tools to combat a lot of the problems we're having or, you know, some of our crimes have gone up and we need to continue to support them. Thank you.
I love law enforcement. You guys protect us every day. I love what you do. We have an autistic son who one night decided to run away at 1:00 in the morning. You guys stepped up, you knew of the family, you knew where he came from and before he came, right when he came into our home, he was just trying to go back to the old home. But we thank you for that, we love you for that. I work with law enforcement. When you guys are done with a crime scene or a trauma situation, I come in and do the cleanup. I've heard from several of you guys that you do not want to do my job. Well, I don't want to do your job because you guys are very well-trained, you're perfect at connecting with the humanity of people and your hearts are all in the right place and I love it. I support you guys 100%.
I like this question because I think safety is the number one concern for our community. They scream it from the rooftops. We don't feel safe or we feel safe. We know that that is something that's really important to the constituents that live in all of Brighton. I think it's important that we also stay out of the way. So understanding policy governance is really important and knowing that Michael Martinez, the city manager, really gets to go to work and collaborate with you and decide how that looks. And we're going to set clear mission, vision and goals as a board collectively to ensure that you guys can do your job. And so I think that is how I would continue to support you. And I do think that you've done a great job protecting our community and we talked about growth today and how that has some impact. And of course, we're going to see some rise in crime with the number of people rising, but in my opinion, you've done a great job keeping that controlled and I can continue to support that.
Thank you. I'm going to answer the question with a commitment on behalf of the city council and then an ask. So essentially on the commitment side, we are, our primary responsibility or engagement with law enforcement is in budget. We make an investment, we make a significant investment as a portion of our budget and we're trying to ensure that those dollars are used for the technology that you need, for the resources that you need and to empower our police department to use the best industry current and contemporary practices. That's our investment, that's our commitment to you. The return from that specifically from the Fraternity Order of Police is that in order to make that investment, keep up with what the needs are, we're going to have to have some more money. We're going to have to bring in some more money to make that happen. We worked last year to do a sales tax specifically earmarked for public safety and for the police department and it didn't pass. As I have learned from our school district, you can't ask just one time, you have to ask seven times and we need your help to make it pass.
I love our police department, honestly. But I will say, I will do whatever I can to support you, whatever you need. I know that there has been a request for additional support to help out the community so they can actually support people and not just police them. And that's important because everybody is part of our community, even those that are out there without, you know, the homeless or those that are struggling with addiction. You guys need those additional supports and that's why I'm currently working on getting you guys some extra support that's not going to cost us a thing. So, thank you.
I think we all agree that this is a great working relationship already, so I don't think we need to fix something that's not broken. I'm just excited to be a part of that, be a part of that collaboration. I did take a look at the strategic plan that's on the police department website. I do know that there is a K-9 program in the works, so that's great. I'm excited to support that. And they're working to develop career pathways and mentorship programs for that department, which I think is wonderful. You create those pathways for people, they stick with you, they see how they're going to grow and you have longevity in your officers and they're not coming and going and you've got some good stability in your police department.
Okay, we're going to start the one-minute closing statements with Ward One again. So, Ms. Williams.
Hello again, I'm Jessie Williams. I'm running for city council, Ward One. I'm a person who believes in community empowerment and placing our community first. So anything and everything that I do is going to be people-focused. And right now, I currently work out in the community and really love to connect with everybody and kind of see how we can support you. And that's about it. Vote for Jessie Williams.
When I first decided to run for city council, part of that decision was because I saw that there was a need for better connection between the community and our local government. I want to build on that connection through accountability, transparency and approved communication. If anybody's seen what I've been saying for the last couple of months, that's it. Communication, transparency, accountability. I think that my professional background in business and technology gives me the needed skills to navigate the complexities of the local government, but the passion that I have really truly lies within the community and making sure that everyone feels informed when things are happening, how they're happening, why they're happening. If people feel informed, they feel motivated to engage in the process and engage in their local government. So I do have one meet and greet left that I wanted to mention to everybody on Saturday at 7:00 AM somewhere. This coming Saturday, I will be on the back patio from 9:00 to 11:00. If there's any questions or concerns that haven't been addressed tonight, then come by and say hi.
I'm looking very forward to serving another four years. I've learned a lot. I feel like, I'm just reiterating a lot of what everybody said, but I really do feel like that I'm here for the community to be that voice. It sounds very cliché, but to be that voice for when you have a problem. I need sometimes just listening to a resident is all they need, you know? But if there's a way that you can step in and solve a problem or help them with a situation, that's my biggest goal overall and we need cheddars.
Ellie, thank you for moderating. You did a very good job. I remember when you started, I think you were like in the eighth grade and now you're like a senior. So wow house. Time has flown, but good job on moderating and we appreciate that. I'd like to thank all of our law enforcement that's here tonight and that's here at all the different events that are put on. And this is all about you, the resident engagement. Thank you for being here. Thank you for caring about your community. I'm happy to be here for another four years. Even if you're uncontested, please just fill in that oval anyway. That's what I appreciate. Thank you.
Excellent. I want to second that. Get out there and vote, go tell 10 of your friends to do the same. One thing that has not been addressed is 40%, 40 to 50% of our population is Hispanic or Spanish-speaking. I also speak fluent Spanish, even though it doesn't look like it. When I was in South America for two years, I was the gringo. But I learned the language, I learned to love them and you'll But I learned the language, I learned to love them and yo quiero escucharles. Okay, I want to hear all of you. So that portion of the population is very well represented tonight, but I want to see that happen. Four of us are rookies and going into city council, we've never done it before, we want to be there. And as for me, I want to be a part of the team and I'm just asking for the coach to put me in. I'm here to serve.
Yo también hablo español. Qué bueno. And a lot of my children attend 27J schools, I already said that earlier, and all of my family is biracial. My husband's family is from Mexico City. So I've had an opportunity to work in this community and enjoy the culture as well. I'm a public servant and not a politician and I think it's really important that we continue to say that as we serve each and every one of you. Feel free to call me, to text me, to send messages, to ask questions. I'm here to serve you, I want to serve you, I've been preparing to serve you, my resume says I'm ready to serve you and I want to be an active participant and engage with all of you in making sure that Brighton can be brighter. So thank you so much, Melinda Carvajal, Ward Three.
Thank you to everybody for coming out tonight. I really appreciate you participating. I appreciate our youth commission for hosting and putting this on. I appreciate the Economic Development Corporation for also making this happen. I love this community. I love this job. This is great stuff, looking at what we can be and what we are and celebrating that and make, working to make it a step better. All politics begin at home, all politics begin at the kitchen table. So make sure that you are voting, make sure that you're speaking your voice for who do you want to represent you and what kind of a vision do you have for this city. And then after you've voted, make sure that you're holding the people who are elected accountable. Talk to us. I didn't like this, I do like this, this is what I want things to be, this is what will keep me here in this community and this is what will keep my kids here in this community and this is where I want to be and this is how we can get to where we want to be. So tell us, thank you for participating tonight, this is what makes the difference.
I apologize that not everybody's questions get answered, but our candidates will be here afterwards if you want to stick around for a minute. So let's get another round of applause for our candidates.